Welcome to the Tuesday, September 25, 2012 Board of Education meeting and public budget hearing. Thank you for your patience while we resolve some technical difficulties on the screen so everybody can follow along. The Board has been in closed session since 6:30 this evening to discuss employment of employee probable or imminent litigation and approval of the August 14th, August 28th, and September 11th, 2012 closed session minutes. First, we need a roll call, correct? Seven Board members present, none absent. And let's rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business tonight is our annual public budget hearing to review our 2012-2013 annual budget. Again, seven Board members present, none absent. So with that, Mr. Purnell?
Yes, Mr. Welton will walk you through the overview of the 2012-2013 budget for the Board of Education.
Thank you. This is the final budget. As you know, last month, we presented the tentative budget. The adjustments between the tentative budget and final budget netted to less than $15,000, which is a very small amount in the net income or loss is only is less than $15,000. So we had very we had adjustments between tentative and final. And let me first talk I spend most of my time concentrating on the operating funds, but let me briefly talk about the non-operating funds. We have the debt service fund, which we we have property taxes to pay our bond ordinances. And then we have a few transfers from other funds. We have a transfer from the education fund to pay the technology leases. And then we have a transfer from the ONM fund to pay debt certificates related to the stadium and the 162 South York building. So that's the debt service fund. The capital projects fund and the life safety funds are for we use those for longer-term capital maintenance capital projects. And this year, we have in the life safety fund, we have our 10-year annual life safety survey, and we have some other work where the architects are designing future life safety projects. Also, in the capital projects fund, we have some work at Lincoln, some tuck pointing. We have a roof management project, some building envelope projects, York chiller, York pool leaks. We're doing some inspection to identify the pool leaks and fix them. So those are the non-operating funds. Dave, if you want to go down. These are the changes on the revenue side from the tentative budget to the final budget. Those total a reduction in revenues of $27,000. On the expenditure side, we have changes that reduce expenditure by $41,900. So all in all, we have small changes from the tentative budget to the final budget. So if we want to go to the presentation tonight, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the changes from tentative to final, but all of the changes were to get more precise numbers in the budget. We take out a lot of the estimates and use more precision, more with, you know, as the closer we get into the school year and the budget year, we get better information and make a more accurate budget. So I'm going to move to the to start talking about our budget, our final budget. We have on the revenue side, we have our mix of revenues where we're at 89.42% local funds compared to the average of 54.63. And as state funding and federal funding continue to decrease, that local reliance is more and more it should it probably will continue to increase to be more locally dependent. The revenue summary here, there's a lot of small words, but property taxes make up 84% of our revenues. The tax cap limits us to CPI increases, and CPI has averaged 2.47% over the last 18 years. The one issue this year with the property taxes that has come up is the estimated refund if the hospital and the Center for Health are determined to be tax exempt. A little update on that issue, the I've spoke with the county, the York Township assessor. They have not received a tax exempt certificate letter from the Department of Revenue. So the holdup there is at the Department of Revenue level. We Aristalianis called the Department of Revenue today. They have not made that determination. They still estimate to have that certificate done by the end of the calendar year so that they'll have that done before the 2012 tax extension. That's, you know, based on the information we have, it is likely that they will be determined to be tax exempt. The Center for Health, they've applied for tax exemption of 54% of that parcel for the years 2009, 2010, 2011, and that amount with interest is estimated at $1,356,930. The hospital, which was taken into account through new growth, and we had planned for that in the PMA projections, is $1,621,506. So the combination of the Center for Health for the three years and the hospital is an estimate at $2,978,000. So almost $3 million of a refund that we could potentially be hit with in this budget year. The new law has made the tax exempt criteria, it's reduced the criteria, it's made it easier to meet the criteria for tax exempt status, and the hospital, the Elmhurst Hospital has submitted a comprehensive application, and it's likely to be granted. In this budget, we have the September 2012 default taxes from the 2011 tax extension, which was based on the 2010 CPI of 1.5%. And then we have the first installment, the June 2013 of the 2012 extension, which is based on the 2011 CPI of 3%. Corporate personal property replacement taxes, that's been declining. It tends to be direct related to the economy and corporate income, so that is why we've seen that continue to decline. Interest rates are at historic lows. This used to be a revenue stream for us, really is not a revenue stream for us any longer, and it's decreased by over $1 million since 2007. Our state of Illinois is in very bad financial shape, and today, we got in a we got in 1.1 million or so from June today. So there was it was three months behind. They're six months behind in driver's ed, but so they continue to send us payments late. General state aid this year was cut. Last year, it was prorated at 95%. This year, prorated even further at 89%. Driver's ed in early childhood have also been reduced this year. This year, we will not have any federal stimulus monies in the budget. That ended last year, so the federal funding has declined. We are also concerned about future federal appropriations for idea funding. So that's the revenue side, which is a very flat picture. On the expenditure side, we are we are a service organization, so most of our expenditures are salary and benefits. Here, our operating funds show that we are 78.56% salaries and benefits. On the benefit side, our medical programs had a very good year, that we were able to have a renewal with flat premiums, which is primarily owed to good claim experience. Most of the when you're self-insured, the premiums really depend on how the claims are, and we've had a few good years in a row, and that's a very good thing. For our medical and dental plans, life, medical insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, all really had flat premiums in this budget year. We also have IMRF employer contributions that have been going up steadily. It's due to investments not doing as well, which drives the employer contribution rates to go up. As far as, well, as you know, we started this budget process, well, back in February and March, we did budget reductions. At that time, we were planning for the hospital refund, but not the Center for Health, and so we at that time, we cut approximately 1.2 to 1.3 million. It's hard to put an exact figure on it because in that process, there's a lot of moving around. But about 1.2 to 1.3. This is the third year of significant budget cuts, and most of the cuts impacted staffing. Really, salary salaries from one fiscal year to the next year are dependent on our staffing and salary increases. Our salary increases in budget year 2012-13, we had certified staff, which is made up of administrators and teaching staff. Administrators that were frozen in FY '11 and FY '12 received a 1.5% increase in FY '13, so that's a 1.5% over three years. If the administrators were new in their positions, so they weren't frozen in the previous two years, they got a 0.75%, which is 50% of the 2010 CPI. Teaching staff, which was also frozen in FY '12, received a 0.75% increase, which is 50% of the 2010 CPI with no step, but they there's also a lane advancement for teachers that earn advanced degrees. On the non-certified staff, we have exempt or confidential clerical staff that got a 0.75% increase, 50% of the 2010 CPI. We had cafeteria staff who also got the 0.75%. And the PSRP, which are instructional age teacher assistants, clerical, received a 2.25%, which is 75% of the 2011 CPI. And custodians and maintenance also received a 2.25%, which is 75% of the 2011 CPI. As far as the staffing, you can see it here. When you look at our positions, the total increase from salary of $60,225,976 to $60,945,346 is an overall increase of 1.2%. Some of the big changes in staffing, we have significantly more special educational assistance, and that really is tied to mandated services. And also, we in an effort to bring back some students that have been outplaced, and those outplacements are very expensive, we brought those students back, and so we had to hire more special aid, special ed aides for that purpose. The that's really the biggest item that I wanted to point out related to the staffing piece. But so then, as far as our just summarizing our budget here, the education fund has is currently at a 26% fund balance, or it's projected, based on the budget, to estimate or to end fiscal year '13 with a 26% fund balance. Fund balance is a percentage of expenditures. The operations and maintenance fund is at 45%, and that's why, you know, in the levy, we are planning to levy a little less in the operation and maintenance fund, partly because the transportation fund and the IMRF fund expenditures have been increasing, and the fund balances in those funds are so low at this point. The transportation fund is at a 4.9%, and the IMRF fund is at a 17.3%. Those funds were both in the red in May, our lowest point of the fiscal year. So we had to allocate our levy a little more towards IMRF fund and transportation fund, which reduced our levy in the operations and maintenance fund, which resulted in the net loss in that fund. But our fund balance is a percentage of expenditures. These are our operating funds. And as we talked about at the last meeting, we talked about that 2012 turned out better than expected. And so that's why you see the the fund balance move up from 29% to 33%. But then we have this budget, which is 1.1 million where expenditures exceed revenues, which brings it back down to 31%, but that's right where we want to be. Just an overall structural deficit, expenditures are outpacing revenues. That's due to the tax cap and being limited to CPI increases. We've got decreases in our revenue streams, such as interest and corporate personal property replacement taxes, state revenues, federal revenues are all decreasing. And then on the expenditure side, the needs of our students are pacing our revenue streams. Expenditures are driven by the needs of our students. We have enrollment increasing. We have mandated services that are increasing in number and in cost. We have a cost of tuition for outplaced students continues to increase significantly. The number of ELL students in the district is increasing. Our technology needs of our students is increasing. Our salaries are increasing, and the health care costs, you know, we have done it says increasing, but it has not increased the last few years. Healthcare in general has been trending higher than CPI, but we've been fortunate with our claims at this point. We've been keeping fixed costs down by taking the broker out to bid, by self-insuring the HMO fund, but it is a concern that health care costs in the future could increase. Over the last three years, the district has made significant sacrifices in budget cuts. We've had we've had class size increases and layoffs to make every effort at balancing the budget. This year, the unanticipated property tax refund prevented the balanced budget for 2012-13. We're concerned, very concerned about pension reforms, currently being considered, which would shift the burden from the state to local responsibility. This could result in yearly yearly staff cuts and ultimately the elimination of our programs that serve our students. Any dollar allocated towards this shift takes resources away from our current offerings or programs. In addition to that shift, there are also we've also seen the state reduce our or prorate our general state aid, cut transportation, cut or reduce transportation, reduce driver's ed, and early childhood reimbursements. Currently, for School District 205, 1% of TRS would equal to $517,656. The shift that's been talked about a lot is about 7% to 8%. So 7% would be about $3.5 million. The way it's been described, initially, they were talking about 1% a year, which would be a half a million, a million, million and a half, so forth. Now, they tend to extend it out further, is what we're hearing, more like a half a percent per year. So we would go more like $250,500,000, $750,000 million till we get up to the 7% to 8% of the shift. So what are our next steps as we move forward? We're going to monitor our budget to actual every month. We're going to monitor trends, how we're doing on a monthly basis. The auditors will be in in the near future to talk about the 2012-11-12 audit report. PMA will use the information from the 2013 budget, the 2012 audit, and then they also use assumptions, revenue assumptions, staffing trends, enrollment projections, other assumptions in order to determine a five-year projection for the district. We use that in to help us determine the 2013-14 budget. And so that will happen, I think we were looking at December, to start seeing some five-year projections from PMA. Last year was January. We waited for the CPI to come out before we did the projections. We're going to try and get it done in December, then maybe revise it after CPI comes out in January. Then in November, we will be we will talk about the 2012 tax levy. That wraps up my presentation.
Are there any questions for Mr. Welton? At this point in the budget hearing, we open to public comments. Do we have any public comments that have been submitted?
No.
We don't? No. Okay. Are there any late public comments that want to be spoken? Okay. With no questions, no public comments, I need a motion and a voice vote to adjourn and return to our regular meeting.
I move that we adjourn the public budget hearing and return to our regular meeting.
Motion by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Ebner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are back to our regular meeting. And I may add the best part of our regular meeting, the student recognition session. So thank you for all the students out there that have taken time away from homework and their studies to join us tonight. We'll be quick so you can go back to that important work. First is the J. Kyle Braid Scholars. And let me introduce, first of all, Diana Smith to give an introduction for our Braid Scholars, and then Mr. Chris Bloom from the Board of Education to present the award.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to bring forth three different groups of students from York in your time in recognizing them. Going to do it a little bit differently tonight. We thought we would turn it over to the students and let them introduce themselves to you and tell you all about the ranch, so.
Hello, I'm Niall O'Brien, and this is Joe Helton. I'll be introducing Joe tonight. I believe Joe's parents in the audience, Scott Helton and Annie Rice, and as well as his brother Tommy. Don't give us away a thank you. Joe and I went to middle school and elementary school together, so we have really bonded over this experience of this award that we received, and we were able to become greater friends as a result of this. Joe is a standout varsity football player and wrestler on the York Dukes high school sports team, and he also says that his role model is his father, Scott Helton, because he taught him how to work hard, and he claims or says that he uses this every single day in his life. Something that Joe did during his interview was he whipped out a pretty funny dance move. If you'd like to show us, Joe?
Well, of course. You know, when the song "Car Wash" happens to come on, you know, you just got to, you know, get ready and break out the wax, or you get it going and clean that car.
That's Joe Helton for you. Joe, also at the ranch, Joe sang a duet with a boy from Naperville North to the song "Ain't No Mountain High Enough." And everybody, this is Joe Helton.
I'd like to thank Niall O'Brien for that lovely introduction. This is Niall O'Brien. His parents are Brendan and Patty O'Brien. His siblings happen to be Tess and Nora. All of them happened to be in the crowd. Like he said, we went to elementary school and middle school together, which happened to be Lincoln Elementary and Bryan Middle School. His role model is his father as well, Brendan. It's because Brendan really helped him learn how to balance life with schoolwork, athletics, and things like that. Niall is a very good goalie on the soccer team, and he is also an outstanding outfielder for the baseball team. Funny thing from his interview was his dance, Niall.
Well, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the song "Grease Lightning" from the movie Grease, so whenever you hear that song, you just kind of got to go grease lightning. You follow?
And also, you know, the best thing from the ranch about Niall was that he has an outstanding impression of Bear Grylls and Bruce from Finding Nemo. If you're lucky enough, you know, maybe afterwards, you'll be able to hear him use his impression. I don't know.
Hello, my name is Bruce.
That's Niall O'Brien.
Hello, I am Kaitlin Bloom, and I am here to introduce Rachel Iverson. Her parents are Keith and Patty Iverson, and she has an older sister, Emily. Rachel went to Hawthorne and Sandberg Middle School along with me. She is involved in band, and she's in many ensembles, and she plays the trumpet. And she's also the center for the varsity volleyball team and has been for the past few years. Her role model is her older sister, Emily, because she sticks to her values even though her peers sometimes pressure her to do other things. Something funny about Rachel was at the ranch, Mr. Braid would always pull pranks on us, and she would always make sure that she was ahead of the game, always trying to figure out what these pranks were and when they were going to happen so that she could help us all out, and we wouldn't look very stupid when these pranks would happen, and we'd all be sitting there like, oh, gosh, what do we do? So this is Rachel Iverson.
This is Kaitlin Bloom, and her parents are Chris Bloom and Nancy Bloom. She has three siblings, John, Liz, and Claire. Kaitlin went to Edison Elementary School, and she also went to Hawthorne and Sandberg with me. with me. And Kaitlin is a runner on the cross-country team and the track team at York. She's also an ambassador. She's involved with Pride. And she's on the Challenge Day Committee, and she's in Student Council. And Kaitlin's role model is her cousin, Michelle, because Michelle was like the sister she'd never had, and Michelle always encouraged Kaitlin to do her best, as well as being a really great student and a great athlete. And a really funny story about Kaitlin at the ranch was, Kaitlin is always, was very quiet the first day. She didn't really say a lot. We get to dinner on the first night, and there's 10 of us crowded around a table, and this subject of turnabout comes up, and Kaitlin just slams her hands down on the table and says, "I cannot stand turnabout. It just makes me so mad." And that was the first thing Kaitlin said at the ranch. This is Kaitlin Bloom.
Yeah, we're gonna...
You guys have more?
Yeah.
You guys go, please.
Now, we're going to talk about what happens at the ranch. Ken and Colleen Braid's son, Kyle, was a great student, a leader on the football team. He was going to be a co-captain with his other junior friend when they were just juniors. And so, before the season, the coach comes up to them and says, "I need you to be faster, better, and stronger, no matter what means you use." So, Kyle and his friends started taking anabolic steroids. These led to his death suddenly. And while Mr. and Mrs. Braid were trying to figure out how to get over his death, and trying to figure out how to pay back the community, they started looking all around for different foundations that helped reward leaders and helped leaders help other peers, because there's a study that shows that most kids go to other kids when they need advice or they need help. So, they were looking for an organization like this, and they couldn't find one. All the organizations were out there to help underprivileged kids. So, in 1994, Ken and Colleen Braid founded the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Ranch. And every year, every summer, hundreds of kids go, go to the, um, the Leadership Ranch, and they learn how to hone their leadership skills and help themselves and others.
We were first recommended by teachers and coaches for being outstanding athletes, but mostly leaders on our teams. We were also, we were also recommended for good, for being a good student as well. But basically, we had to be recommended, then selected by the J. Kyle Braid Committee of our school in order to be in the process of choosing two boys or two girls as the winners of this award. And usually, there are one or two alternates, one boy, or one boy and one girl, or two boys and two girls. But then, once you get to the ranch, you have to go through hundreds, well, actually more than a hundred hours of in-class. And basically, you have to take notes the entire time. Sounds like very straining, but it was so much fun because you got to learn so many new skills, whether it be negotiation skills, or your helping skills, and things like that. It was just, it was very fun to finally be in a class that you just absolutely loved to be in.
Along with the classroom sessions, there are numerous activities that we do throughout the week, such as whitewater rafting, horseback riding. We play basketball with each other, and all of these activities revolve around, like, using the leadership skills that we learn in the classroom. We learn the seven habits of highly effective teens, and these are able to help us on something that the Braid's have, it's called the ropes course. Objects are like, such as a 12-foot wall, and we, and when we learn in the classroom, these things, we learn each day, different, these different skills, and they build up throughout the week, and they are able to help us better complete these ropes courses, which are in fact, very challenging. And when you go throughout the week, you learn that these skills are very, very helpful in helping you complete these challenging ropes courses, and it helps you lead, and sometimes step back and let other people lead throughout this entire situation.
And from all these things that we learn at the ranch, we take all these skills back to our high school to be leaders of other leaders throughout our conference, our school, and just throughout the kids at our school, by using those helping skills and other skills that we learn to help each other out, and so that the students don't necessarily have to go to teachers or adults, they can also come to us as their acquaintances. And we thank the school board for all the support that they have given us, and thank
Well, there's not much left for me now. And I do have to thank the negotiating skills they taught my daughter. She's put those to good use at home. So, you know, as, as, as this wonderful kid has said, the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Foundation is a prestigious organization, is recognized nationally. It's, it's a heck of an asset to have in your college resume, too. Most of the colleges know what this is. And the whole concept that is built around, and seeding, seeding our high schools with young leaders is, is such a fantastic concept, and what the Braid's have done is, is phenomenal. I mean, and, and what they, what these kids have accomplished is great. I mean, the, the Leadership Award recipients are a select group of students who've been chosen based on exemplary qualities, including the ability to learn, listening, and oral communication skills, adaptability to creative thinking and problem-solving, organizational leadership, personal management, and the ability to work with others, including, among other, other traits. We are extremely proud of both our current and our past recipients of this prestigious honor. It's a tribute to the positive role models in our community, and especially our dedicated teachers and parents who have helped shape these, these kids. I would also like to recognize York for being one of a select number of high schools nationally to be included in this program. I will read the proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the mission of the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Foundation is to identify and select young adults who exhibit leadership potential, have a strong sense of moral values, and possess the compassion necessary to improve their world. And whereas the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Camp Experience in Villa Grove, Colorado, is offered to only a select few high school students who have been screened through a highly competitive process. And whereas York Community High School students, Kaitlin Bloom, Joseph Helton, Rachel Iverson, and Niall O'Brien, were selected to participate in the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Camp under the guidance of positive role models and trained professionals, and have developed leadership skills that promote responsible decision-making and increased self-esteem. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School District 205, the families of these students and the community, now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students for this outstanding achievement."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're on the table.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I give this to you for Ms. Smith.
Okay.
The board and the community are very proud of their new crop of J. Kyle Braid Scholars. Next on the agenda is the National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. They, they really don't bite up here.
Thank you, and as the board is aware, and I think parents that are here as well, each year, one and a half million juniors take the qualifying PSAT exam. It's designed to measure the mathematical and verbal skills of our students. This year, our juniors will be taking it upcoming on October 17th. The students who score in the top 3% nationwide are named National Merit Commended Scholars, and we learned today that we have 15 commended students. I thought I'd just sneak their names in really quickly. Laura Anderson, Claire Cornell, Margaret Crotsir, Leah Gortowski, Jenna Honeywell, Peter Howland, Joseph Kleinhans, Laura Krantz, Anna Lansdowne, Justin McDonough, Ann Nelson, Anthony Parrotti, Alina Schorz, Kaylee Slavik, and Garrett Stevenson. So, congratulations to our commended students. And then, the top 1% nationwide are named National Merit semifinalists, and they go on to compete during the year for a total of $32 million in scholarship awards. Not each of you, right? But total, nationwide. And it's my pleasure to introduce the six students who have qualified for this great honor, Karen Altergot, Carolyn Dirksidey, Evan Fabry, Emma Fisher, Ushashi Naha, and Matthew Wilbur. And I want to take just a minute to tell you about them. I know you probably think I say this every year, but this is an amazing group of kids, a really unique group. They have a lot in common. They're all strong students, of course, very active and engaged at York and in the community, but each one has a unique story. In this group, we have students from all five Elmhurst Middle Schools, students from Churchville, Sandberg, Bryan, in District 205, and also Visitation and IC. And when I talk about you, if you could just raise your hand and wave for a second, so people know who you are. Karen Altergot is the daughter of Therese and Tom Altergot. She has a brother and sister, I believe today are both in Paris. Is that right? She attended IC through eighth grade. I asked her why she chose York, to come to York, and she said it was because of the academic and musical opportunities that she wanted to pursue. She plays the trumpet and the piano, and she is one of our three amazing drum majors that you may have seen at our football games. She's on her tennis, bowling, and badminton teams. Karen's in the middle, like the other students of her college search. She has her eye on Stanford, among others. She loves science and credits the TV show Bones, if you're familiar with that, for her interest in forensic science. And many great teachers along the way, including her science teachers at IC, and I think Mr. Brown in physics at York. I think it was his physics class, maybe, that got her interested in biomed. And did I mention that in her spare time, Karen has actually written a book entitled Four Willows, which I'm guessing includes a strong female protagonist? And this is Karen Altergot. Carolyn Dirksidey is the daughter of Elizabeth and John, who are here. She has two sisters and a brother, attended Emerson and Churchville. She's looking at several great schools, including Indiana and Illinois, Carnegie Mellon, Brown, and Wellesley. What a story. Carolyn is a lover of literature. She loves to read. She loves to write. She's an artist and a musician. She's in very challenging courses all day, and I think spends a lot of her time in the art department, where she is a member of our AP Art Program. This summer, she organized and ran an adventure camp for youngsters in her neighborhood, and organized for eight-to-13-year-olds. It was based on the children's literature series Percy Jackson. She put together her own administrative team and constructed an online registration process. We should probably get some hints from her. They planned daily and hourly activities for the week with crafts. She was talking about making swords and shields the night before, and in the process, created this amazing sophisticated fantasy camp for 17 pupils, I believe, that showed up. It was so popular that she, and maybe her mother, had to turn people away when she realized her backyard was too full. This is Carolyn Dirksidey. It's my pleasure to introduce next Evan Fabry, and Evan is the son of John and Leslie. He has a sister, Madeline, who is a sophomore, I think, and Evan attended Jefferson and Bryan Middle Schools. He's applying to the University of Illinois and Purdue. He's planning to, he's pursuing a, a number of career options right now, including biomedicine, computer science, pre-med, and engineering. Is that right? Pretty close. He's not sure yet. I wouldn't be completely surprised, if you know Evan, if he pursues and figures out a way to do all four. He credits many inspiring teachers, including physics teacher, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Lampa, and Ms. McKinney in English. Outside of York, Evan is an Eagle Scout. He's also the senior patrol leader, which is the highest leadership position in the Scouts. He spent part of this past summer in an internship for a financial news group, and ended up being a key staff member in helping them to create one of their mobile sites. And I'll bet that company just couldn't believe their good luck at bringing Evan on board. He's a great thinker. I know him from the York Advisory Team, and in fact, now he's working with the new staff members in the Learning Commons to create greater access for online research sites. This is Evan Fabry. Emma Fisher. Emma is the daughter of Maureen and Bill Fisher. She has a brother, Liam, and a sister, Audrey. She attended Jefferson and Sandberg, and credits many adults for inspiration, including her parents, but also teachers, Mrs. Fox, Newman, and Mulvey at Jefferson, and her band director, Mr. Pavlik, and Mitch Carlson from Social Studies. And I'm going to just tell you to remember this name, because this woman is going places. She is an accomplished runner, a flautist in our band. I don't think she's ever earned anything but an A in all the time that she's been at York. She's involved in STEM and the math team in the National Honor Society. She sews in her spare time and loves the outdoors. She's always admired Jane Goodall for creating her own path. She's applying to Northwestern and Stanford and the University of Wisconsin, which I think your dad is pushing. Is that right? And I'm pretty certain Emma will go wherever she wants. So, this is Emma Fisher. Ushashi Naha is the daughter of Manju and Kakun Naha. She has a brother, Pushkar, and she attended Hawthorne and Sandberg. She credits her parents and many teachers throughout District 205 for their support, including her fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Robb, Mr. Zock at Sandberg, and Mr. Peter Anderson at York. She's very involved in York in her classes, and in Challenge Day, and also Scholastic Bowl. She's applying also to a number of great schools, including Brown and Stanford and Northwestern. She plans to become a doctor, following in her father's footsteps. She said she's not sure what specialty she's interested in, but she's going to avoid pediatrics and OB-GYN, because she thinks that might discourage her from having children. I don't know what that means. She's an accomplished dancer. She studies classical Indian dance and has for most of her life, and practices several hours a day during the summer. Something very interesting about her, she's always loved school. She talks about a memory that even as a preschooler, when many preschoolers don't want their parents to leave the door and can't wait to leave, she was actually crying and fighting to stay at school when her mother came to pick her up. She's always loved her studies. And then, Matthew Wilbur. And Matthew's the son of Michael and Linda Wilbur. He has two brothers. He attended Visitation School prior to coming to York. He's looking at Stanford and Notre Dame, and plans to study engineering, I believe, like your father and brother as well. He credits a teacher at Visitation, Mrs. Gilarducci, for inspiring him, and Mr. Peter Anderson in Social Studies at York. He says that Mr. Anderson, he thinks, has been inspiring, because clearly, he's so invested, like so many teachers, in his own teaching and about the success of his students. In his spare time, which he has very little of with each of the kids and talking with them, they have very little spare time. He loves to watch football and hang out with friends, and I think enjoys the series Breaking Bad, if I'm not mistaken. I asked him if he's always been driven, if he's always been self-motivated. It's something just interesting to think about with each of the students that are standing here, and he said that it really started when he came to York, that he felt it was a huge step up for him, and he knew he had to stop procrastinating and step it up to stay on top of this challenging academic and athletic schedule. And I would say he's definitely figured it out. This is Matthew Wilbur.
Mrs. Shannon Ebner will read the proclamation.
Okay. I just wanted to say one last comment. You gave nice remarks, but this does represent 1% of the students that took the PSAT, the preliminary SAT. And we are so proud of these students, and I want to thank the staff for inspiring, teaching, and supporting these students. Thank you. Here's the proclamation. Whereas the National Merit Scholarship Program established in 1955 is recognized throughout America as the most prestigious indicator of academic excellence, and whereas this program encourages excellence by identifying high school students whose performance on the PSAT ranks them among the most academically talented students in the nation, and whereas York Community High School students... And whereas York Community High School students Karen Altergot, Caroline Dirksheidie, Evan Fabry, Emma Fisher, Ushashi Naha, Matthew Wilbur, qualified as National Merit Scholarship semifinalists in the 2013 competition, representing less than 1% of US high school seniors, including the highest-scoring entrants in each state. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, and the families of these students in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students for this outstanding accomplishment.
Next is the American Volleyball Coaches Association Team Academic Award. And let me introduce Mr. Ken Doughty.
You know how difficult it is to follow the principal? And then that great group of kids, who I know very well, the foursome, before you have to speak last. Next time, can I get right after the budget presentation? No offense, Mr. Welton, it was really good. I'm back there thinking-
Be careful what you wish for.
If people don't laugh, what am I going to say after that? And it's funny, I was walking in, just on a side note, and I saw the J. Kyle Braid kids working in a room on their presentation, and so I walked in, I know a lot of them. And Joe Hilton was talking about negotiation skills, and I'm, and learning them and learning how to do it, and I'm like, really? I'm like, you come in every day asking me for a pass, and I've never even had you as a student, and I go ahead and give you a pass. I'm like, it's working pretty well. But in all seriousness, I did learn another thing from J. Kyle Braid, and I think the dance move idea is great. I think these guys, for tryouts this year, will have to add that to our tryout routine. But these kids are phenomenal, you know? I think that I am very grateful to be able to coach these young men. Last year, I stole most of Mr. Collins' speech, so I'll keep it particularly brief. I do want to introduce them right now as we begin. Here tonight, Jason Bowles, Anthony Cano, Joe Duda, Andrew French, Sebastian Guzman, Miles Kalchek, Benjamin Koval, Sean Lyons, Connor O'Ryan, Mike Pasternak, and Carl Severino. We have four members who are away at college from last year, who were also part of this award. That's Trevor Jordan, Duffy Pitlock, Jackson Rebar at my alma mater, Michigan State, and Jacob Ruprecht. And these young men work hard on the court, and we always kind of strive for athletic excellence when they're on the court. In the community, we ask them to excel and be excellent members of the community. If you come to one of our matches in the spring, you'll see that they shaved their heads after raising money for Relay for Life. Last year, they raised over $1,000, and every one of them shaved their heads. Most of it, most of them have grown it back now. And then excellence in the classroom. As a teacher, I've had some of these kids. I expect some of these juniors to be challenging for National Merit Scholarship recognition next year, as they take their tests. And it's just a joy to have them, to not have to worry about eligibility issues for two years in a row. And I suspect that will continue in our program as we emphasize academics. It makes it very easy for me as a coach to focus on what's going on on the court and in practice. So it's really a joy to coach them, and we're very proud of them. Thank you.
Mr. Doughty, you were too tough of an act to follow last year, so I've asked Mr. John McDonough to read the proclamation this year.
Just a couple things. For the second year in a row, the American Volleyball Coaches Association named York as an All-American Academic Team. And this award only goes to the teams with the GPA of 3.3 or greater on a 4.0 scale. Only 22 teams in the country make it, and only five in Illinois. And York's done it two years in a row. Just a little bit of background, in the Policy Committee, we've been trying to rewrite policy governing extracurricular athletics. And it's a difficult thing. We're trying to capture the causal connection between competition and academic achievement. A lot of social-emotional development, collaboration, teamwork, goal-setting, respect, self-discipline. But when you come to this volleyball team, well, they make it really easy. Success on the court coincides with success in the classroom. We don't need to convince people here. This award tells people that this is working on both fronts, and it's working rather well. Now first, you have to have a good group of kids, kids who are adding sports to their school experience and not the other way around. They're not using it to substitute for anything. Great job, all of you. It's really, you've done well. And you need good coaching. Mr. Doughty, I guess Mr. Westendorf is not available tonight. But they put in action what we're trying to write in the committee. They're great mentors, and educational leaders first, and athletic instructors added on. And we're very grateful for your work. Thank you. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas for the second year in a row, York Community High School's boys volleyball team was honored as an All-American Academic Team by the American Volleyball Coaches Association. And whereas the AVCA honors teams with at least a 3.3 cumulative GPA on a 4.0 scale, and the York team, which has a 3.669 cumulative GPA, is one of only 22 boys' teams in the nation to receive the award, and only one of five in Illinois. And whereas the effort, dedication, attitude developed through the sport of volleyball has a lifelong effect on the members of the team and on other student athletes. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, the families of these students, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205, express deep appreciation and congratulations to coaches Ken Doughty and Mike Westendorf, co-captains Jackson Rebar, Jacob Ruprecht, and team members Jason Bowles, Anthony Cano, Joseph Duda, Andrew French, Sebastian Guzman, Trevor Jordan, Miles Kalchek, Benjamin Koval, Sean Lyons, Connor O'Ryan, Michael Pasternak, and Duffy Pitlock, and Carl Severino for their outstanding performance during the 2012 season.
Thank you. Well done. To the boys. There you go. Well done.
Let me just add, for the record also, that I also shaved my head, but it has not grown back yet, so I'm still waiting. Let me just say, we are very proud of these students. I want to congratulate Diana Smith and her staff, and everybody that works very hard to create the outcome you saw here tonight. And this is just a small representation, I think, of the students of Elmhurst, and some of the achievements that I think sometimes we take for granted. But I think you got a sense tonight how wonderful these students are, what kind of support they receive from their parents, from the community, from staff here. And I think it's a night to celebrate everyone who is a part of caring about kids, who care about their future, and who really spend a lot of time and effort making a difference. So congratulations to students and everyone involved. I think there's many of these to come, and as superintendent, you can't be prouder when you see a night like this. So congratulations to everyone.
I think these kids have made our entire community proud. Now I have one more word, and then I was going to call a short break, but I see the vast majority of the kids here tonight are so enthusiastic about going home and getting their work done, that they've gotten a head start on that. And congratulations to them for that, because that's a smart idea. There is one more set of awards to award tonight, or to mention tonight, I should say. And this time, not to students, but our own staff. It is a priority of this Board of Education to increase the amount, frequency, and quality of communication with the Elmhurst community. And in recognition of that, on Friday, September 21st, the school communications professionals from across the state were honored at the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relation Associations, or INSPIRA for short, Annual Communications Contest Celebration. More than 150 entries were submitted in 10 categories. Entries were judged by independent communications professionals against criteria of excellence, and only those receiving top scores in a variety of areas received awards. District 205 Director of Communications, Malia Smith, Assistant Superintendent Chris Welton, and Electronic Communication Specialist Kathy Schroeder received the only Award of Excellence given in the category of Financial Information. Malia has been invited to be part of the National Telephone Panel, known as the INSPIRA Power Hour, discussing bottom-line engagement, building support and understanding of budget challenges, to which we held next month. In addition, District 205 was honored with two awards of merit. One was for last year's report to the community, which was mentioned at our last meeting, and also received a national award. The other was for the Board brochure, which informs our public about school board meetings and how to participate in them. So Malia, I have three different awards that you and your staff and Mr. Welton have won. And of course, the, the, I just got to go back and make sure I quote this correctly. The Award of Excellence, that's the phrase I was looking for, of course, comes mounted on wood. So, Malia, your staff, Mr. Welton, your staff, congratulations. So now, for any of our students that remain and want to go get a head start on what's due tomorrow, or maybe later in the week, you're free to go. And for anyone who would like to continue with the Board of Education meeting, you are more than welcome to stay. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments for this portion of the meeting? All right? Seeing none, the next item is superintendent's communication. Mr. Purnell.
Yes, let me start this evening by reviewing our FOIA requests that we have received since our last report. We have seven FOIA requests that I'll be reporting on tonight. We have one commercial request asking for student directory information, which was denied. We have a commercial request asking for bid information on RFP number 13-01 after our security. That FOIA request was granted. One request asking for future plans of York graduates, including GPAs and ACT scores. Part of this grant was approved, another part was denied. Another commercial request requesting for information on our 403B vendors, which was granted. A request asking for legal bills, that was also granted. Another commercial request asking for utility bills, granted. And finally, one request regarding district policies, which was granted. And those are the seven FOIA reports this month.
Next item, we would, I'd like to introduce Dr. Charles Johns and Principal Jane Bailey and other staff to talk about the school-wide Title I plan for Conrad Fisher. And Dr. Johns will be giving you the background on this.
Good evening. In preparation for the consent agenda, I bring forward to you what is called the conversion from a targeted school assistance or school support model of Title I expenditures to a school-wide model, which Fisher Elementary is now eligible for. Little bit of background on what we talk about when we're referring to Title I. Title I is a section of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that was signed back in 1965. It is intended to help with the academic achievement of disadvantaged students. And as you can see on the screen, there's a number of different ways that it tries to do this. First of all, by providing federal support to schools with large numbers of needy students. It aims to provide academic programs of high quality to children, provides resources to enable us to narrow achievement gaps with our students. And some of the wording within the provisions of Title I is aimed at ensuring that we are efficient in our use of resources, and gives us some flexibility between different federal grants or monies that come to some school districts. Built into Title I is an expectation of local control and accountability. And part of this is done because the focus is really on school-wide reform strategies. Over the past year, Jane Bailey, principal at Fisher, her staff, and school community and parents have been working very hard on a self-study, and that is part of, the model of Title I is a close internal look of a school's functioning and capacities. Additionally, built into Title I is expectation for parent involvement, and there's numerous steps that schools have to go through in applying for Title I, particularly with schoolwide. And finally, it enables us to coordinate with other services. There's a couple different titled grants that we're allowed to use our monies differently with Title I. So that's an overview on Title I. What happens is, as schools grow in the size of their percentage of students in poverty, they become eligible for moving to a model where the funds can only be used on students that are needy, to where a point where the government recognize, or the legislators recognize, that when you get a certain size number, or you get kind of that critical mass of poverty within a school, even those students who are not from impoverished backgrounds still need support, because the whole school has a degree of need, and the federal government frees up our use of those resources for all students in the school, not just those that are living in poverty. That threshold is 40%, and we've crossed that threshold at Fisher. As you can see, five years ago, the poverty level at Fisher was 19. Embedded in the report, or the first page of the report that Jane presented, we're now at 57%, and that's a relatively new number, and that's why it's not charted. We've more than doubled, obviously, the amount of poverty that amongst our students that are at Fisher. That is our largest population of students living in poverty in the district. So this enables us to start working on schoolwide. We knew this in advance. We saw this coming based on that trajectory, or that line, trend line that I showed you. And Jane has been working with the study team of faculty and community members quite diligently for the past year. I will take this opportunity on Jane's behalf to thank the community and staff, who worked really hard on putting together the plan that has been incorporated into Board docs. Two phases of this program is a self-study and then a planning phase. Underneath the self-study, there's kind of a, there is a comprehensive needs assessment, which means Jane pulled together a team, they spent some time with a vision clarification, putting together a school profile, a great deal of data collection and analysis. And after going through this analysis, they were able to put together their plan, which is primarily goals and strategies, where they target students in areas of need. They brought in parents for parent involvement, in part- They brought in parents for parent involvement in parts of the planning, and sought out additional supports that we can direct funding to, to help them in this upcoming year. The plan summary, and as I'm sure you've seen, is quite detailed, so I'm giving you the 20,000-foot view. A great deal of work with parent outreach and liaison. It's a project that we're very excited about, where we're using community resources to help support the families in that school community. Additionally, there's a hope to bring professional development that is specifically regarding teaching students who come from impoverished backgrounds. And there's a great deal of learning that's been done in the past 15 to 20 years on educating children who live in poverty. Additionally, Jane and her staff have been working for quite some time on additional academic interventions and some monitoring strategies to help their kids. They've run a very successful summer school program for several years now. They're going to continue with a very robust reading and math intervention program. And we've added a great deal of technology, or we're starting the addition of a great deal of technology in the form of tablets and smart boards, which we should see come to fruition about winter break. So, a multi-pronged attack on helping these students who have some real learning issues, but also helping all students, which is the benefit of moving to a school-wide. Now, the legislature, the legislation requires that I get board approval to move from targeted assistance to school-wide assistance. Quite frankly, I don't know why one would not do this, because it increases our flexibility. But that being said, I still need board approval. So under my request, I'm requesting, under the consent agenda, that you approve the move of Fisher Elementary to a school-wide assistance model under Title I. As I mentioned, this gives us a greater flexibility of resources, and enables us to provide all the students of a school, as opposed to looking for solutions that are targeted. We're able to make sure those opportunities exist for all students. And that is my presentation. Any questions?
Looks like Mr. McDonough has a question.
Dr. Johns, I'm remembering that the qual -- I thought the qualification happened last year. Is this a year-long process to prepare for the transition? Is that it?
Yes, sir. It is a year-long process of planning and data analysis and collection.
Mrs. Hirsch. Or, I'm sorry, Mr. McDonough, were you finished, or?
I'm sorry, just --
No, no, it looks like you have a follow-up question. Go ahead, please.
It's 52%. So in the past year, the Fisher School community increased 13% low income in one year? Is that correct?
According to the study, it's now at 57%, so it's actually 18%.
18%. That's -- it's an amazing challenge.
You know, just a reminder too, if you looked at the presentation on overall district-wide, you can see our free and reduced lunch, our poverty is increasing pretty dramatically district-wide. So I think we're up to almost 13.5% in moving forward. So, not surprising. It's a big increase, but overall district-wide, we have a lot of students, a lot of parents, families in need.
All right, now, Mrs. Hirsch. Sorry.
That's okay. I want to draw attention to the amount of work that I think that the staff at Fisher has faced. Not only do we have a challenge with some of our student population in terms of the experience, the early childhood experience that these children who are living in an environment that is different than many of our other elementary students in other parts of town, they're not exposed to books, they don't have language experiences, they don't have conversational experiences. There are so many things that many of us take for granted. We ask all of our schools to continue with each child to grow that student's achievement. We look from the beginning of the year, fall maps, to the end of the year, fall maps. We are expecting typical growth for all of our students. And the majority of our students in our community have access and support from home, from staff, from extended family, from experiences in preschools. They have, the majority of our students, have a huge head start, a great solid base. But for these students, not only are we asking for Fisher staff to help these students meet typical growth that is expected by our high-achieving school district. We just saw the results of the students, you know, what they're capable of. But we also are trying to ask the staff to make up for and to fill in the gaps when we do not have students with that solid foundation coming to us. So I think it's worth noting that not only do we have a building where we have almost 60% of our students coming from a background that is not as solid as the rest of our buildings, but we also are holding them to very high expectations. And I think it's been a huge effort, obviously, the depth of the report. I think the commitment of the Fisher staff, you know, just off the top of my head, doing the summer program, the back-to-school, handing out free backpacks and some school supplies to families who couldn't provide it, bringing in physicians to be able to provide physicals for free of charge. There are so many things that many of us take for granted. And this school community can't count on that. So I think we need to support these kids. These are our kids. But I really want to commend the Fisher staff for the challenge that they face. And I'm hoping that with the flexibility of moving to an all-school model, it will be easier to support those students, and then it will help our staff be more successful with those students. So I obviously fully support this, but I do want to -- I do think it's a special challenge that Fisher faces. And Churchville along the way, as these kids go on up to middle school and wind up at York. But I think there is some special consideration to be had here. So thank you to the Fisher staff.
Mr. McDonough, yes?
Just to echo what Maria said, I was the liaison at Fisher. And I was fortunate enough to be invited to participate in some of the all-school, or to witness the all-school planning. I didn't intend to get involved, but I did comment a little bit, because what I saw was a group of passionate professionals, really engaged, people who are there with calling to give that little bit extra that a Title I school might need. And it was really a tribute to the leadership of Jane Bailey and all the teachers there, and the community members who were participating. Such courageous, active individuals was -- it was really a great experience. I left the day moved, I left the session moved that day.
Mr. Purnell?
Yeah, Dr. Johns is going to stay right where he's at. And he is going to present the district student achievement report for this school year.
I'm going to ask Charles Frandl, Director of Research and Quality, Assessment and Quality Analysis, to help me with the hard part. What's that? I'm sorry.
Are you guys raising money for charity with those haircuts?
We're accepting donations, Joe. So today, for the achievement summary report, we're going to not exactly mirror what we did last year, based on feedback off of last year's extremely complete data summary. We have focused our summary on two areas. The first is what we have, as you know, over the past year, put together as the key performance indicators, also known as KPIs, because I know I'll use that acronym very quickly. The key performance indicators were worked on by the CNI team, the Curriculum and Instruction Team, the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee, the EC12, and we've put a lot of effort into honing these. I think we're all committed to tracking them for a period of time, but also recognize that some will be more successful in trying to accomplish our goals of an excellent district than others. And it's something that we will grow with. There's a number of them that I'm going to cover right now. But obviously, one that gets the most attention in the press would be our ACT composite score. We're also tracking what's called the Educational Planning and Assessment System, or E-PASS growth. That is the growth, in our sense, from the Explore test that's taken in eighth grade, in the fall of eighth grade, to the ACT, or in our case, the Prairie State ACT, which is taken in the spring of the junior year. We're also tracking AP participation rate, the graduation rate. And then we've added something this year that we're having an interesting time considering calling, called the New Century Participation Rate. I'm going to talk about this now instead of later. The idea under the New Century Participation Rate is we believe the education in District 205 is very rich, and we don't want to focus it simply on external assessments. That we wanted to look at things that we thought were very important to a child's education. So when we put together New Century Participation, we looked at things like world language participation, participation in industrial arts classes, participation in science elective classes, maybe and family and consumer science classes, and I'm sure I'm missing a short few. The problem is that, when we look at this at a district level, virtually 100% of our students participate. So it is not something that we track today, because it doesn't seem to provide us a great deal of value. 100% of our students participate in New Century Participation skills. So we need to, over time, hone that a little bit, so that we can glean more information out of it. The next, in recognition of the community's pride in its fine arts program, is we're tracking fine arts elective participation over time at the different levels. In recognition that there's, of what we just finished talking about with Title I, is we're tracking the extent, the existence of our achievement gap, and how quickly it is going away. And then we are tracking something that we've developed in District 205. It's students being on track for college and career readiness. This is a trajectory that we built, kind of a trend analysis, where we set up a set of scores that we thought would adequately prepare a child for college readiness, based on the research from ACT and a few other entities. And we reverse-engineered it back into grade school using the MAPS assessment. And there's a number of local school districts that have used a similar structure. We've used their research. And NWEA, I'm sorry, I can't remember that acronym, also has put together a great deal of research, I think it was a five-year study, that confirmed the notion of using the MAPS assessment in ACT as a trajectory for students. And finally, we use the NWEA MAPS, that's the grades 2 through 8 assessment, for looking to see how well our students are meeting typical growth. And obviously, as is expected of us, we are going to report on two accountability measures, the first being the ISAT taken in third and eighth grade, and the Prairie State, which is taken in 11th grade. These are still our determinants of AYP from the No Child Left Behind Act. It should be noted that District 205, York High School, Churchville Middle, and Fisher Elementary did not make the extremely aggressive levels that are expected by the federal government to make AYP. That is, although we're disappointed, it is noteworthy that very few districts are not in the same position. The first KPI, Key Performance Indicator, I'd like to point out, is the ACT composite. In the lower corner, you'll see our target is at some point we, by '06 -- I'm sorry, 2000, boy, I'm going way back. In 2016-17, we'd like to see a class of ACT of 25. When I refer to "class of," we're referring to the scores when students leave as seniors, to differentiate it from the Prairie State ACT, which is taken in the spring of the junior year. If you look at the chart, the very top line, the green line, is the class of ACT data. That's the students who graduated last year. You'll note that the class average ACT was 23.9. That's the second-highest composite average in district history. And what's also important to note is the line right below that is the Prairie State ACT. That's the test taken in last spring by our current seniors. Notice the high score at the end of that purple line. Typically, that green line is about a point on average higher than the junior line, meaning that we can expect about a points growth, on average, of the students who retake the ACT, a point-average increase from the junior year to the senior year. So last year's juniors had an average composite of 23.8, which is an extremely high score, represents a great deal of work, both on the administration, but the staff of the entire district, of really preparing students for some pretty key tests in those children's lives. So we're very excited about that nice increase. You notice that there's basically a trend line for both of those that increase over time. Now, if you go to the red line, that's the plan. That's the test that's taken in the freshman year. And then the blue line, the bottom line, that's the Explore test. The Explore is taken in the fall of the eighth-grade year. What we are measuring on the next slide is the amount of distance, amount of growth, from the blue line, that's the Explore, up until the purple line. And what we're noticing is, not only do all the lines trend up, but there's improvement between the assessments over time. So there's more and more gap between the lines as we go across time. So not only are our students' overall scores increasing, but the amount that they are growing between each test is improving as well, which we see as an indicator of a district performing very well. To better clarify this, this was our E-PASS Growth Key Performance Indicator. Our target was, by 1617, that we would have seven points growth between the freshman Explore and the Prairie State, the junior year ACT. Based on some data collection techniques from the past, this is a little harder to pull off than we thought. What you have in front of you is not cohort data that we try to fixate on as much as possible, but it's actually the average scores instead of cohorts. So they're not necessarily matched students. And you'll, and we just didn't collect data that way five, six years ago, in this district. So we have Explore scores that, what we see, I guess, we're looking at the distance between the blue line and the red line. And you see last year, the amount of growth between the Explore and the Prairie State was 6.9, so we're a tenth off of our goal for 1617. Now, a little bit of a side story to this, with the -- Charles, coming on board, is our Director of Research Assessment and Quality Analysis. We were able to really do the cohort data analysis for last year. And if you look at students who took the Explore with us and took the Prairie State ACT with us, the value-added gains through the E-PASS system is seven points. So we've already reached that goal. That's something to really be proud of. And I want to go back a slide. If you notice how fast the blue Explore score line is going up, you'll see the impact in a couple of years could be really tremendous. So this piece of data, the freshman class going into York this year has an average Explore of an 18, which is really high. But while they're at York, they grow a great deal. So you combine those two together, and the future is, will be exciting to see. The next Key Performance Indicator is Advanced Placement Participation Rate. We don't have this year's data yet. The way we put this together as our KPI, as our Key Performance Indicator, is that we're going to, we're setting up our target based on a factor of the number of students who participate in the AP program divided by the number who are eligible. So in other words, that is approximately, this year, we have 669 students taking the AP and 1,924 are eligible, which gives us a score of 34.8. Problem is, we're unique in computing that KPI in that way. And we'll, but we'll turn to it in future reports. In the meantime, we thought it was important to show this chart, where we see in the blue, the number of students taking AP classes has more than doubled in five years. And we see that the number of exams has, is also more than doubled. An important point to point out is that the pass rate has been very, very high. And we saw a slight erosion, but it went to be statistically significant from 2011 to 2012 of three tenths. But in the meantime, we have a lot more students taking an AP class and taking an AP exam. These are very high numbers, certainly something that the students and staff should be very proud of. Graduation rate is a little tricky in Illinois. The issues that -- The issues that Mr. Welton has to deal with on finances in the state are not contentious to finances and trickle into instruction as well. This is the graduation rate. You'll see the asterisk on 2011. The state changed how we compute graduation rate, and then they changed it back in 2012. So it's a little more complex than that, but it's the easiest way of stating it. Our target's 95%. We have a very good 94.3%. The high schools are a great number of programs that target young students, who are those most at risk of, of really coming apart at the seams and not staying on track for graduation. As promised, move to the Fine Arts elective participation, so that we can move away from standardized tests and obviously graduation, not standardized tests, but to really start to measure the robustness of our curriculum. We've, we've set up our baseline scores, or we're presenting our baseline percentages for participation in the electives program of music. Our target here is to take these numbers and increase them by 5%. We have very good levels of participation right now. I think that's a worthy goal to increase by 5%. This is a little harder to read. The next couple of slides are about, oh, I'm going to turn this over to Charles, because it gets hard now.
For a couple of slides. The next KPI is our achievement gap. So we're comparing the achievement by an overall district average to achievement for specific subgroups. Now, this slide itself isn't the gap. What this is, is the, the data that we build that gap information from. So we're taking our end-of-year MAP data for our elementary students. And for this KPI, all of our elementary students that take MAP are lumped into one group, and we find an average. Then, the gap is actually calculated by looking at the one number that's for all students and comparing it to students that are in each of the individual groups that are listed there. The target for this one is to reduce it by half. So this is a set of baseline data from last spring, and our target by the 1617 school year will be to take each one of those gaps and cut them in half between this point and then. We do the same thing at the middle school. So again, these are the overall average RIT scores for students at the middle school in both math and reading, for everyone in the all group, and then each of the individual subgroups. And then the gaps that exist between that all group and several of those subgroups. Now, a couple of things worth noting. One, we're treating each of these groups, or each of these levels, elementary and middle, separately, and have a separate goal of cutting the gap in half for each of those. But it's worth noting that for some of the groups, if you compare what's going on at the elementary level, where the gaps are, some of those groups are seeing a reduction in the gap between our elementary scores and our middle school scores. You know, if you look at Hispanic and African-American reading, those gaps are decreased by the time they reach middle school. There are other things that raise questions. Our ELL gap remains large in both groups. Our IEP gap increases from elementary to middle school. So those are issues that give us things to dig into deeper and ask questions about. And now I think at the high school, I'm going to turn it back over to Charles.
And I think this is the most complex slide we're showing you, but this is the achievement gap using the Prairie State ACT scores. Now, what's a little different from what Charles just showed you is that we're only reporting the subgroups that are eligible for, under AYP. We only have approximately eight ELL students that took to Prairie State last year at the high school, so we're not accountable for, we're accountable for those students, but not under the provisions of NCLB. So the subgroups that are large enough, they, they meet a threshold of 45 students. At the high school, the subgroups are Hispanic, IEP, which means special ed, and the FRL, which is free and reduced lunch. So we see, again, still a bit of a gap across the district. Because we don't have an, a limited English proficiency subgroup here, you don't see that sticking out like you did under the elementary and middle school. Instead, we have a special ed gap, we have Hispanic and a low-income gap, which my suspicion overlaps with an ELL gap you see in elementary and middle school. So this is part of the reason why the CNI Subcommittee is going to be spending some time over the next couple of meetings focused on the, the learning needs of students or English-language learners. Again, our goal here is to reduce these gaps by half. Now, as I mentioned before, we've established a learning, a performance trajectory for our students. What we're measuring on these particular slides is how stu, our students, the percentage of our students that are attaining that level of trajectory, we hope to have increases by 15% by 2016, 2017. Our real goal, over the long, long term, is to try to get 80% of our students to those high levels of performance. And again, that would be to take a 24 ACT and work it back to about second or third grade. One thing you'll notice here is under reading, we only have two years' worth of data to work off of. We introduced math in the district three years ago, and that's why we have math data. The good news on this slide is, is that we're seeing incremental improvement in the percentage of students that are reaching that target. And we see the same thing continuing to happen at the middle school, particularly in math, where we have some pretty sizable steps of students' performance increasing over time. We had a nice jump in reading last year, where we went from 48% to 53%. On this particular slide, it's at the high school level. Again, we're trying to get 80% of our students to a 23 on the Prairie State. We're up to 59.2%, which is a very high percentage. We're moving a large body of students to a higher level of performance. And part of the, the beauty of this particular measure is, it's not just increasing the number of students who get maybe 35s or 36s on the ACT, but it's really moving a body of students to being more eligible to get in higher-quality universities and colleges, or a higher level of non-college-bound workforce participation. So it is great news to see that we had, in '09-10, we had a 4.4 percent point, percentage point jump, and then in 10-11, we had 4.2. And then we continued it into 11-12, I'm sorry, last year was 4.2. So nice steps up in terms of the body of students who are performing at the levels we asked them to for the Prairie State ACT.
The last of the KPI pieces is the percentage of students that are meeting NWEA's typical growth measure. Just as a refresher, typical growth is a number we get from NWEA. So at the beginning of each year, when students take the MAP test in the fall, they get a RIT score, which is a measure of their level of achievement. But they also get a number, or we get a number, that is a typical growth. And that's based on NWEA's norming studies and past history, that basically, they go and they say, okay, if this is a third grader that got a score of 190 in math in the fall, they can look back historically and see what has happened to thousands of third graders that got 190 on the math test in the fall, and they can say that, on average, a third grader that scored at that level would grow by 11 points by next spring. So that student now has that starting score and also a typical growth number, which is really just the average amount of growth that NWEA has seen for a student at that grade and that performance level in the past. So this measure tells us what percentage of our students met or exceeded that typical growth number for reading and also for math. Again, as a refresher, 50% would tell us that our students are growing at a national average rate. So 50% is kind of the baseline number for this. Anything above 50% means that students in District 205 are, are growing during the year at a rate that's faster than the national average. Our target here in five years is 70%, which, which is a very ambitious target for this number. Actually, in reading at the elementary level last year, as you can see, we had a little bit of a dip. Math has seen those incremental changes over the past three years, where, where it's trending upwards, not at a rate that would get us to 70% in five years. If we switch over to the middle school, same measure with middle school students. Here, we saw a dip in reading last year, but a strong rebound this year, as well as a strong jump in math for the 2012 school year. All right, next couple of slides, I'm going to switch over to our state accountability testing, just to give you an overview. This first one takes all of our state accountability tests and lumps them together in one big pot. So it's all of our third through eighth grade ISAT math and reading tests, as well as our 11th grade PSAE math and reading tests, thrown together in one place to give us one kind of overall view of at least that portion of how we measure student achievement. And you can see, historically, Elmhurst has achieved at a very high level and have made incremental increases over the years. We do not have state data for 11-12 yet. That doesn't get released until mid-late October, so that's why the red bar is missing from the last one. But you can see from past years that we've historically outscored the state averages by a healthy margin. Digging in a little bit deeper, ISAT reading, so this is third through eighth grade, looking at students in each of the four categories exceeds meets below an academic warning. Trends here over the last six years, you know, you can see the, the number of kids that are below in warning, so kids that don't fall into the meet exceeds have decreased. We've also seen a trending of increasing the number of kids that are achieving in the exceeds level. Switching over to math at the elementary and middle school level, we see the same trend with more and more kids in the exceeds category over time. At high school in math, that exceeds category strengthening shows up there as well, especially in the last three year, where we've seen more and more kids in the exceeds category. We've also seen, from last year to this year, less kids in the below and warning. And then finally, reading at York, on the 11th grade PSAE, we've seen some incremental increases in exceeds, although this one has been a little bit more stable over the past two to three years. So that's a broad summary of our accountability measures. Dr. Johns mentioned earlier the results of that and the impact that it have on, had on buildings that didn't make AYP. And that wraps up the broad summary, and now I think we turn it back over to the board, if you have specific questions. Are there any questions? Okay, Mrs. Ebbner?
How much longer will we be using the ISAT test?
Well, it's really hard to tell at this point. It looks like it's going to be two more years, right, two years still?
Yeah.
So it looks like we're still at two more years. They're, they're going to change some of the cut score levels, but this year, but minimally we'll have for two more years. We're still waiting as a state, as you probably know, we did not get a waiver request approved by the federal government. The state superintendent made it, I think, very clear that it's unlikely that we will. So things will probably proceed as they have been for the past decade.
I read from the super, the state superintendent, Chris Cock, that we may get a some relief where the AYP percentage won't increase. Will we get a one-year relief with the percentage?
We were on that la, we were on that last year, where the, the levels, the cut score levels did not increase for the 11-12 school year. It'd be great if we could anticipate that again for this year.
Mr. Bloom?
What we see here is fantastic. I mean, we're, we're starting to put fact bases behind things that are going on. There's still symptoms, though. I mean, there's still the heart rate, the blood pressure, the, you know, the body temperature, but what, and maybe, you know, tell me if it's too early to ask this question, but I mean, what, what do you attribute, you know, the, the positive upward into the right shape of, what are we doing right? You know, what have we done? Can we trace this back to specific things that we've done that we are using to drive that trajectory? And then in areas where we're short, you know, again, I may be asking this early, but have we started to dig into kind of causality?
Well, I, I think that in education, the factors that go into success or failure are, are very numerous and very hard to identify and are different for every child. I think the successes in this district are really, go back to the commitment of the teachers, a great deal of work that they've done over time to, to make sure we're teaching a very strong curriculum and engaging content. This summer, really a heroic amount of work was put into putting together high-quality assessments that give classroom teachers really the data they need to have in order to tweak and refine their instruction going forward. We also are in a community that is very education-minded. I think the students hear it, feel it when they go home, that education is a priority in this community. We've been able to endure with a very balanced curricular program for kids, so it is, it is exciting to be in our schools, and I think that's important as well. In terms of, of going into the future, we certainly know, particularly in K8, kindergarten through eighth grade, that we need to spend a great deal of time focusing on our English-language learners. What is difficult with English-language learners is that it is a very diverse group within themselves, that you have a, a great deal of different backgrounds, a great deal of different languages, and that is an area where we need to do a deep study, and that's something that the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee is, is going to be working on and is part of the leadership team's agenda for the near future. We have put together a lot of staff. We, we did some excellent hiring over the, the spring and the summer to really bring in some first-rate staff for ELL students, and we need to continue to do some professional development along that line for those students who are recently exited from the program, and then for all teachers. We, that is an area that I think we need to work on in the future. If you look across some of the subgroup data that we showed you, in many areas of the district, our students are extremely high-performing. We have a couple of areas that we've targeted, like I said, ELL population, where we can grow, and that's, that's where much of our future has, has to be focused.
The other thing, Chris, is, you know, this is the first time we've had these key DPIs that we've presented to the Board of Education. Part of the straight, part of this now is to spend the rest of this year in developing strategies on how we're going to develop and, and get to our goals in, in 16. And so we're going to be engaging the curriculum department, principals, staff, to say, okay, how are we going to get to where we want to go? What is it? The programs? What kind of services do you need? What do we need to change in order to increase our achievement overall in each one of those key DPIs? We're probably going to come in back and saying, you know, I'll be honest, this won't be resource-free, but we're going to be coming back this coming year and saying, okay, here's our strategy plans for a lot of these areas. Here's what we think we can do. We would like to institute those and talk about how we can do that. So this year is going to be a lot of dialogue of analyzing this data with the full team, with faculty, and again, I believe the answers are out there with our faculty and staff. I think it's a talented group of people that are dedicated to this. I think giving them time to look at this data and then telling us what they need in order to increase that achievement go a long way. And I, I think it's, it's part of the excitement of having these key DPIs across the country to start developing that strategy in this district, so.
Mrs. Hirsch?
I just want to thank you for the work of putting these things together. I know we've been talking about this a long time. I think it's great for the community to see the work that we've been doing, the focus that we've had. I don't know that we can point to one individual program on why the numbers are trending the way they are. I think it's a million of individual efforts. But I, I think one thing that I always focus on is really the accountability measures that we are accustomed to seeing. And if I flip through the screens and I look at just, you know, the district-wide reading and, and math, there's plenty of blue, there's a good amount of green, there's a little bit of yellow, and I think we've got no red, which is for the K8, for the third through eighth grade assessments. But then when you get to the high school, all of a sudden, the yellow piece and there's some red. And I, I think it's, again, important to point out that the accountability measures that we are accustomed to seeing over many years, that we look at for third through eighth grade, are not as rigorous as the accountability measures that we get when we get to the high school. Thus, I think the full board's large emphasis on, let's not just look at the state accountability measures, let's look at what we feel is a more rigorous and a more accurate predictor of how our students are going to perform once they get to that nationally-normed 11th grade assessment, the ACT. So I, I think... So I think it's, again, just worth noting, when we look at the third through eighth grade numbers, we feel really good about those. That's not my personal concern. We are, from an accountability standpoint, required to report those, and we're held accountable to those. But I do, I am very interested to hear the plans, and it's, they're not plans that are just at the high school, because you can't say that all of a sudden we look at the high school and the math and reading scores, we've got the yellow and the red. That happens long before students get to the high school. But when we do look at where we are with reading at the high school, we've got 28% are below or in warning. I think it's just of note to point out that if we can address that particular and decode that particular problem, that is how we're going to get to that ACT score, being where we want it to be. So I think it's, again, just pointing out the discrepancies in the assessment tools that we're using. I'm looking forward to eliminating the ISAT test and moving to the Newpark assessment. Hopefully, it's going to be a more valid assessment. But I just think those things are still worth pointing out for community members that may not be tracking this on a basis at which the Board of Education has to track this in our administration.
Thank you. You raise a very important point. I think one of the issues that's been a part of Illinois' plan for No Trial Left Behind is a recognized discrepancy between the two tests, that the cut levels for meets and exceeds at the ISAT are completely out of alignment with what high schools are held to, and it really is unfair, which is why we look forward to the resetting of those cut scores. So at least we have a fair, as fair as we can be. They're different tests, but to even have such discrepant cut levels has been unfair to high schools when compared to the K-8. Additionally, this is the thinking that we put into place when we started to focus more on, in District 205, on our performance trajectory and using the MAP assessment. We have more confidence in the MAP assessment. It provides better tools for our classroom teachers, is more, we can make it more meaningful in how we use it going into the future. So as we shift between two different assessments, we feel some confidence in using MAP, because we think it's a really good indicator for our kids.
I'd want to thank you and thank, I mean, this goes all the way to the individual teachers who are looking at their students' MAP numbers and coming up with interventions and moving our kids forward. You know, I think that we are getting increasingly sophisticated in how we are identifying gaps, seeing how our students are performing to valid measurements, and I think it's really, you know, congratulations to, obviously, you know, our superintendent and the administration, but I think this board has really stepped up the accountability in talking about metrics and how we're going to measure performance and how we're going to identify gaps and zero in on them and close them. I think that I'm so proud of the work that everybody has done on really trying to hold everybody accountable and getting everybody focused on the problems, resolving them for our kids, because our kids don't get to repeat third grade or seventh grade. The kids are here now, so I'm so very proud of the work that has been done on the focus on accountability. So thank you for all of that.
Mrs. Stufan?
It's not only just the accountability, but it gives everyone the same frame of reference to have the healthy collaborative discussions to say, you know, what are we doing right? What aren't we doing right? You know, what can we change? Implement it and see if it makes some progress. I get it that it might not be a one-to-one as much, but it allows you to continuously peel back the onion to say, if this was so good, why didn't we get the improvement? So was it a tweak? Or, you know, it just, you know, it's the right thing to do. I'm very pleased that we have this information already. At times, I know that board members think that I'm too impatient, but I have to say that we did make a lot of progress already when saying, in the last year of saying, we want to be, we want to hold ourselves accountable. What do we need? We need district performance indicators and key ones. You know, we're going to measure a lot of different things at different levels of the organization, but what are the key ones that we want to continuously measure at least a high level to communicate to our constituents? So as I look at tonight, I actually looked at, you know, three things, right? It's the story that we need to tell, not only our legislators to say, this is really what we're doing, and here are the issues that we have, and here's how, you know, your laws or your bills are impacting us. We actually can tell the story. I mean, I look at it from the financial story that Chris shared. We have the metrics of how well we're performing in the student achievement, but we'll, each department will be laying out all of their performance indicators and the progress that we're making. It allows us to communicate the story to our taxpayers, to say, you know, this is what we're doing with your tax dollars, and to be able to communicate the story and to keep them informed as to what we are doing so that they can, you know, chime in if they need to. So I really want to commend everyone. This has been a lot of work, but I think it's been done in a very short period of time, so thanks to everyone.
Mr. McDonough?
This really is one of the great nights of the board's cycle, I think, when you get to tell the story. And really, the increase in EPAS, that trajectory which you schooled us on, I think is really, it really is transformational, and I agree with what you said. One of the targets you had, though, was ACT average target, and, early on, and I remember discussing at our session, which unfortunately had no attendance, that should have been the most attended meeting in the entire community, in my opinion. But what you said then was 80% to reach, I believe it was the 24. And so I'm wondering why it stated as the average ACT, and when I thought that 80% really talks about lifting, and you did make that comment earlier tonight, so I'm just wondering why it's gone back to that average ACT.
This is some of the complications of our KPIs. It's really both. So then when we're looking at the composite average, which is what someone using an online tool or a newspaper to compare District 205 to another district, they're going to see an average score. They're not going to see the percentage of students that have reached college and career readiness score of ACT score of 24. So we felt that for people to be able to make comparisons when making important education decisions, we keep to some standard metrics. The 24 is where we really want to get 80% of our students to get to a 24. It really is a far more ambitious goal than an average of a 25, which could be, you know, the trajectory that's taking place now could be in the very near future. The 80% is a very rigorous standard, and I think will produce a higher composite average by the time we get there.
I understand the need to publish the average since we've got to, you know, put our scores in the newspaper, but I think the 80% is more reflective of what our mission should be, which is bringing all the kids along. The other thing, there's a lot of good news here, and I think the people in our community should take notice of it and realize that changes really are happening, and they're happening quick. The thing that kind of troubles me, and I don't know if it's a starting point or an endpoint, is this lag in reading, particularly at the elementary school where, level, where, you know, on-track-for-college-and-career readiness is down. I mean, you only have two years, so we don't have much of a trajectory there, but it's down around 40%. That's kind of a very difficult starting point, isn't it? And I'm just wondering if you had any comments to that? And later on, the growth, if you take away that one-year 53.6 in, or I'm sorry, not growth, but back to college and career readiness and reading for middle school, it's still below 50%, except for the one jump in this year. I'm wondering if you had any thoughts about that and can kind of explain to me how I should be thinking about it in terms of understanding the relationship between that and typical growth, which also seems like it's not, you know, kicking. It doesn't seem it's north of 50%, which I believe it should be. Well, you told me it should be.
Well, we obviously want it to be, the typical growth to be over 50%. The problem with typical growth is, is that the entire country, that's the line of 50%. To get further above 50%, it gets harder the further ahead of 50% that you're trying to get. So that's our target, and it's the goal that we want to set, is to get over the 50% and to continue to grow. The trajectory scores, particularly at the younger grades, is we want to give it some time to see how that flushes out. We know that we can't expect kids in second grade already to be at the 80% threshold. So what we're seeing in some recent work that we've done is that, is the curve at which kids get to that 80, to get to the college readiness trajectory. So we know it's going to take a couple of years for a child who may come in a little lower to get up to that level. We can't expect it when they start. So this is something I think that my advice would be is that we watch over time. We don't expect all kids, or a very high percentage of the kids, to be college-ready by our work, so early in their education, but we want to get there over time. There just isn't enough research at that point to figure, we've drawn a straight line. Reality is, we know that it's a curved line to get to that point. We don't have the research yet to figure out what that curve line would be.
Again, I don't want to dwell on that. It's just something that struck out, stuck as a contrast to the overall story, and that's why I brought it up. The overall story is definitely a positive thing.
And as Dave pointed out, that we're now at a point where we've got, we have KPIs that we can start to say, these are all aligned goals and values and measures for the district. We can focus on these and turn to classroom experts to see what they know and what they need to improve in those areas. The one thing that this report on an annual basis does not give good credence to is the fact that our classroom teachers are doing data reviews on a very regular basis, formally and informally, and data is becoming more and more central to their daily work, and they're doing a really excellent job. So this is something that's going to continue to grow over time, and now we need to start to turn to them and say, with your more closer-tuned perspective, what are some things that you need in order to get growth in these particular areas?
I have just a couple of things that I want to add. At the risk of being redundant, I mean, this is the key business of a school board this evening, so thank you very much. You've set some very high goals, which I think is great. And I think what's also very impressive is you've gone beyond what I consider the failings of ISATs and AYP, and you've gotten to the core mission of our school district, which is success beyond high school, whether it's college or career. And you've managed to map the key performance indicators all the way from high school down to kindergarten, and that's fabulous, because otherwise you just don't know if you're on track. And I'll be curious over the years if, you know, if that mapping, you know, holds true and how well it tracks. I do have a couple of questions, and I will not be pressing you for numbers and then asking timeframes. I learned that last year, so. So, and in fact, you know, these are a few things that, from your inspiring narration of the slides, that came to mind. First of all, I wonder if at some point, and how difficult this is to collect, that, you know, I consider really our peer group, the high schools that are located in the collar counties of Cook County. And I wonder if at some point in the future, you could kind of show us, you know, using ACT scores as a measurement of kind of how we fall within that group. I think there's, I don't know, 80 or 90 high schools in that peer group. So I'd be very curious as to kind of where we are and kind of track that as we go along. And I also wonder if there's a way to, pertaining to AP tests and participation, you know, one of the, I mean, there's, it's great that we have so many kids and a growing number of kids that are taking, enrolling in AP, and particularly kids that are taking more and more AP classes, but I wonder if there's a way to track how many kids take just at least one AP class before they graduate from high school? And the idea there is that, you know, we can get an assessment of what percentage of our kids are experiencing college-level rigor before they graduate from high school, particularly now that the learning commons within York is in place, which provides that key safety net for kids to get help when they're challenged, and to encourage our kids to challenge themselves really beyond their comfort zone. So, and that's really the tier of kids that I'd like AP to see if we can reach into, is just that test of, how would I do because, you know, once I get out of high school? Because that freshman year, they're taking five AP courses. And then also wonder if you have any way to assess the impact of our new fees on participation in music and fine arts? And I don't know if there's any way to dig back in the data, or if that's just, we can just do it onward, you know, moving forward only? And those are really my three questions, and I'm not expecting answers tonight, because I think all of them involve a little research and a little digging, so, I mean, those are three things I'd be curious to see, so. And again, let me echo the sentiments of the board, that you're doing a great job. This is exactly what we want to see, is quantitative measurements to our students' success and our students' chances of success once they leave, once they leave our district. So thank you very much.
We'll have to look into the, into the fine arts participation. I think we've got the, I think we can find some of the data for the other two questions, but I'm not sure what it's going to take to find the impact of the fees on the fine arts.
Yeah, I understand that our data is not, it's hard to track, it's not complete.
Let me just, just one other comment. I want to thank curriculum office, really all my staff, administrators, and the teaching staff and everybody else, for this past year and kind of putting what I think is setting the table. We're not, we're just starting this journey, and I think the important part is, I think you can see the elements of how we can really move this district forward, because, you know, you sense the focus, you sense the sophistication of what we're looking at, and that's a credit to all of them. They have really diligently worked very, very hard this year to put that in place. So I want to thank my team, the faculty and staff across the district for looking at it, taking it seriously, and really, and hopefully engaging us in quality discussions on how we increase that achievement for all students across the district.
Thank you. The next on the agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes for August 14th, August 28th, and September 11th, 2012. Are there any changes that any board member would like to propose to those minutes? Hearing none? Is it, okay, hearing none, then those minutes stand as published. The next item is superintendent's agenda, and entertain a motion for the superintendent's agenda.
I'd actually like to request to remove item H.
Okay. Any other removals? Okay, then a motion, please.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through G.
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. D'Aroney. I need a roll call vote. Mrs. Walsh?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Aroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, the superintendent's agenda passes. Now, for item H. Do I, I would need a motion for item H.
I move that the Board of Education accept as I move that the Board of Education accept, as a first reading, the revisions to policy number seven, colon, sixty, residents, which will become effective at the time of its adoption and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, section seven, students.
And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
There we go. It's getting late, isn't it? Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. McDonough. Any discussion, please?
Yeah, I have some concerns with the policy as it's revised, and I guess I would ask if we could hear from the policy committee, some of the rationale behind the changes in particular related to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to the point, in the policy during, in the section, resident students.
You're, I'm sorry, what do you mean by resident students? Just what the changes were, were recommending and why? Maria? Okay. As, the last board meeting, I mean, I thought Dave did a good job of articulating what the, what the situation was. We have more and more families that are moving into Elmhurst and looking at enrolling their students and keeping them in the district. And what we wanted to do is say, you know, what's our policy, and what are other districts' policies? And the committee had, had decided that we would like to be, would like to, you know, be more like other districts where we provide a little bit more leeway, if you will, for residents who want to move here, and we, you know, allow them to not, you know, pay the taxes as well as have a tuition fee. I mean, that was the rationale.
I guess my question is, and I'm not sure that I, I have a solid understanding of what it is that we're proposing here, so I want to have a good understanding of what it is that we're proposing. The way that I read this, if a non-resident student becomes a bona fide resident of the district in less than ninety days following that date that the student first attends a school, a prorated reimbursement of any non-resident tuition paid to the district will be reimbursed. It's, it's, it appears to me, and I'm not, again, I'm looking for clarification to make sure I understand what the proposals are, but my understanding is that we're looking to, if a student is not a resident of the district, then if they can provide evidence that they will become a resident of the district at a certain point of time, the superintendent is allowed to have that student enroll, but then that student, that family pays tuition for the portion of the time that the student is not residing in district. And it appears to me, and help me if I'm misunderstanding this, that we're looking to refund that money once the student moves in.
That's correct. Currently, your policy states, very similarly to how it reads right now, that a student whose family, let's say, is building a home, shows us proof that they're building a home, that they have a closing date. Presently, your policy right now states, we will collect tuition all the way through until they move into the residency, and that tuition is non-refundable. The purpose, I believe, of the policy was to guarantee that people who come to us who are non-residents make sure that they have every intention, and they do indeed move into the district, and they don't rent it, they're actually become residents, and that was kind of our insurance policy, in a way, to say, you're going to pay tuition, you're going to pay tuition all the way through, and that is our safeguard to make sure that you very well indeed move in and show, and become residents of the district. But at the same time, we're going to collect tuition, we're not going to give it back. We talked about this in policy, we had some parents call us and say, I understand that you want to make sure that we become residents, but then it seems like, once we establish residency and we fulfill the promise that we came to you with, why wouldn't the board then reimburse us for that tuition, because we did indeed do what we said we were going to do, which is move in the district? And the parents felt it was punitive the other way, that it's simply taking tuition, and they do become residents, and then we keep the tuition anyway. And so that was the impetus to talk about this policy. As Karen said, we looked at other districts around us, we pulled some district policies, and this seemed to be kind of the standard that districts were looking at, that it does guarantee, they do establish residency, but when they do, then there's reimbursement back to the tuition of the family. And tuition is very expensive for these families, so they are anxious to, at least for the board, to consider some kind of refund. Policy committee discussed that, came up with this policy, and that's how it's at the first reading this evening. And, you know, finance, our policy members, if I didn't get that right, feel free.
Mrs. Daroni.
Did you consider the fact that it might encourage families to say, well, hey, I got ninety days to find an apartment, let's do it? I just think it seems like it's encouraging people to not be serious about moving in.
But they're paying us tuition.
Right.
They're paying us as they go, so I don't know why that would be encouraging parents, because they have to pay tuition upfront. And if they don't move in the ninety days, we keep the tuition.
And the kids move out?
Yeah.
But we also ask for proof of residency in the very beginning.
Right. They have to show us that they have proof that they're moving into the district, that there is a future date when they intend to move into the district. So they either, and really, this is really aimed at people who are purchasing a home, who are having a home built, or they're closing on a home, and there's a closing date that's after the start of the school year, for the most part. That's the, the audience here that we're talking about. I can't imagine this would apply to an apartment.
I have to admit, my initial hesitation on this is that we already have a number of residency challenges. I think that historically there have been, you know, we've had residency challenges, we have a firm that we hire to go try to establish residency, and I'm very cautious when it comes to what could be perceived as loosening up the, the rules about residency. So I'm not sure that I understood the reimbursement thing, and I'm not sure that I've thought it all the way through in terms of, to be quite honest, you know, is there an opportunity to game the system? I'm not looking to introduce complexity in our residency. I just thought it was, it's worth having a discussion around.
Mr. McDonough?
I think the only, there's really no change in residency in this, because that family, you know, still is moving in on, say, October 15th, and that's still an issue, whether they did move in October 15th, whether they have, I think the issue in this is the new approach to tuition, and we did talk about it quite a bit that evening in policy. And the idea was that a new resident coming in, there should be an inducement to have them move in, as opposed to a penalty. Often enough, the, the families really do want to get in before school starts, they don't want to put their kid behind the eight ball, and this was adding an additional burden to those families moving in. The tuition thing is really disconnected from the taxes, because if it's an existing home, that tax, I mean, assuming there's, you know, proration of taxes that occurs at the closing, those taxes are being paid, assuming it's not in, you know, it's behind on its taxes, it continues to pay. And so, in a way, that pre-tuition is a windfall. This thing, this tuition really doesn't track multiple kids, you know, in the same house. We do have this provision that says the, the kids who used to live there can carry on for the rest of the year. But it really doesn't track that idea that, okay, there's, you know, an extra set of kids that are getting the district education without paying for it. In a way, this tuition seemed a little arbitrary, and so there was some attractiveness to this idea that it should be reimbursed. But it doesn't really affect the issue, in my opinion, of evidence of residency. That issue is the same whether we have this reimbursement provision or not.
Can I ask a question about when a family moves out of district and we allow them, the students, to attend to finish the balance of the school year? Is that, where, where is that? Did I miss that?
Right above.
Right. So theoretically, you've got a family that moves out of the district, and we allow the kids to stay in, and then we've got a family that's moving in, and then we're refunding them the tuition once they move in, right? Okay.
Under this policy, yes.
Right. Dave, isn't it law for public schools that you keep the student in the district?
Once they establish residency, yes.
If I can throw my two cents regarding the issue of people that are trying to, for lack of a better term, scam the system, we have plenty of people that try to do that, and I support a policy of aggressively pursuing those people. This policy, however, I see is, is very different. I mean, essentially, what we're doing is collecting a security deposit that, in fact, the family is moving in town. And there's a lot of towns around us, a lot of places people could move. This is, I think what we're doing here is we're making our policy more friendly, more Elmhurst-friendly, to induce people to move here, or at least remove a barrier or a non-inducement to move to town. You know, we, like, like any other town around us, you know, want high property values. This is, and when somebody is thinking of moving to our town versus another town, if, if we're saying, well, I know your house isn't going to be finished till late November, and you want your kids enrolled in August, you know, we're going to charge you tuition every day and not reimbursement, not reimburse it when you do move into your home, that's, that's a barrier to entry in Elmhurst. I just think this modification of our policy makes this a more attractive place to build a home or to move to. Mrs. Daroni.
Yet, with this barrier in place, our enrollments continue to grow. Right?
I don't see the relevance of that.
Well, you said it was a barrier.
Well, perhaps it would grow faster. I mean, I-
Is that what we want? I mean, do we want?
We want high property values, is what we want.
I'm not seeing the relevance of that with high enrollment.
We want to make it attractive for people to move to Elmhurst.
By having a strong school system?
Correct.
Where students achieve, all students achieve equally? I don't see what the tuition thing has to do with that.
Do you believe our tuition is what, that we're charging sixty-five dollars a day? Okay.
Do we know how much we're actually, how much tuition we collect in, in the year?
No, I don't know that off the top of my-
I mean, what is the dollar amount that we're going to give up if we start refunding all of this?
It's pretty minor. I think we have, on average, two or three families that pay us tuition on a year. The problem with the families, if you take it from the family's perspective, the family comes in and they have every intention, they have a closing date of October, first of October. What they're struggling with is, I have to pay tuition, I'm not going to get the money back, but I want my kid to come to Elmhurst, but unfortunately, my child has to start in another district. And for some kids, that's a major disruption. And so the families are saying, you know, if I could, if, if, their argument is, if I, I have every intention, if I can prove to you that I'm moving in, I'll pay the tuition, but I'd like some consideration on a refund coming back, because I can't afford not to have that refund, and yet I want my child to start in Elmhurst, because that makes good educational sense. I want my child to be in the school, some kids don't transition well, for all of those reasons. So that's kind of the rationale that the parents present to you, to say, I don't understand, if the intent of the policy is to make sure I move into the district, I'm, I'm owning up that I'm moving into the district, and I'm going to show you proof that I'm moving in, I just want consideration of, is there some way to get a refund of my good intentions? So that's the argument we get from the parent's side.
But isn't that possibility already here in the old policy? In paragraph one, two, three, four, where the superintendent can-
No, we didn't have, no one could pay tuition.
Grant an exception?
You know, I'll be honest with that, I am not comfortable with this, superintendent makes exceptions, Susan. I think that leads to accusations of favoritism and everything else. If, if we're going to have a policy, I would like the policy written out so that it's clear what the superintendent's going to do. I don't like, personally, and this is up to the board, but I don't like when it says, well, the superintendent can make an exception. It begs the question, what's the exception? And how is the superintendent going to decide that exception? I'm just not comfortable with that.
Mr. McDonough?
Mr. Purno asked us to write an exception, and we couldn't come up with any standards for it, which would have left it completely arbitrary, and, you know, the, the committee didn't feel that was, well, first of all, probably not legally defensible, that you would have an exception without any standards to it, and secondly, it just didn't make sense. And we tried to come up with standards, and we really couldn't come up with any. So we eliminated the exception and went more towards this reimbursement.
Mrs. Hirsch?
I just, I don't, I don't believe that I had a full understanding, and I wasn't privy to the full discussion that was held in policy, so this has been helpful to me. But my concern is, I want to make sure that, number one, we charge tuition, because we need to ensure that the expenses that we incur to educate these kids are covered. So I want to feel very confident that the expenses that we incur, we know, we have a total of a hundred and, I don't know how, a hundred and ten million dollar total budget. We, we cost a lot of money to educate kids, so number one, I want to make sure that our expenses are covered for students. I don't want there to be, you know, an exception or a way to game the system. So if you feel comfortable, Mr. Purno, that, you know, there's, in terms of an apartment, in terms of, you know, the property taxes being paid, I don't want to get too mundane in this, but if you feel confident that the expenses related to educating these kids are pretty well-covered, the other question I have for you is in terms of administration and overhead, for a building principal to know, you know, do we, do we feel pretty confident that we have the bandwidth to be able to track these exception kids that, you know, we need a tuition payment by the first of the month, and if we don't get the second month, and, you know, do we have the capacity, and do we feel comfortable in managing something like this?
We're already doing it. So, that's through my office.
Okay. I mean, the way that I read this, it's adding to the load, so I just want to make sure that we're, okay, adding to the load.
Again, even though, even the requests that we get, and then they don't, they can't afford tuition, so they don't come, or they come later, for some of these families, I don't think we have a lot of these. I think we're talking a handful each year, I'm guessing four or five families that have a closing date, are building a home, and that's, all of these are, are people who intend to move in and have a home that's being built. That's the ones that I've seen. Now, you know, again, we brought to the board for discussion, the board doesn't have to adopt this, the board can keep the policy the way it is, but we just thought it was worth a discussion, I need to see if the board wanted to consider that exception. The other thing we can do is, if the board wishes, put this as the new policy, if it creates problems, does it prevent us from coming back to the board and say, you know what, this policy did not work as intended, and we need to revise the policy again? I don't see how that could happen, but I'm, you know, obviously, a lot of people spend a lot of time- a lot of time trying to figure a system, so.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Derone.
You don't think that you're going to have as many problems at the 90-day point as you now have at the drop-dead beginning point, where people say, "Well, you know what? It's supposed to be 90 days, but I only need 10 more days, or I only need five more days, and I'll be there." And, you know, I just think it's going to, I agree with Ms. Hirsch, it's going to take a, it's a lot of extra burden we're putting on ourselves. I mean, why 90 days? Why not 30 or 60? Did the committee discuss that? Is that just because everybody else does it that way?
Because a semester is approximately 90 days long.
90 calendar days is not a semester.
I thought, I apologize. I interpreted it as school days. I thought that was our discussion.
That was my question to you at the last meeting, so.
You know, frankly, it was originally 60, and then it got changed to 90, and I don't remember how that happened, quite frankly, in the discussion.
I think it was just from reviewing the other policies from Naperville, the comparisons we did. I can support this. I just think that it was helpful to have a discussion to probe around, you know, what the concerns are. I do think that it's something that, you know, personally, I believe that it's in the best interest of every taxpayer that pays in for, on their tax bill for Elmhurst District 205, for us to be very careful when it comes to residency and ensuring that the students that we are educating deserve the education and deserve to be in those classrooms. So my initial concern is just making sure that we're still clear with our strict residency requirements. If we can accommodate families, and if this is a good practice to put in place, then I can support that. I just want to monitor it and make sure that we're not adding work that we don't need to be adding to the administration. We've taxed you enough.
Anything else? Okay. Mrs. Walsh.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnny?
No.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Six ayes, one nay. The first reading of the policy is adopted. The next thing on the agenda is the superintendent's agenda and three action items.
Yes, the first item is an approval of the resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2012, 2013. This is obviously connected to Mr. Welton's presentation for the budget, and this is the resolution to adopt that budget as presented this evening.
Mrs. Hirsch.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget for fiscal year 2012, '13 as recommended, and that the President and Secretary be authorized to enact the resolution and certificate of authorization.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. McDonough. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Walsh.
Ms. Hirsch? Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnny?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes.
Yes, the second item is related to the resolution for naming a board secretary designee to accept the nomination papers for the school board elections. In your notes, you will notice that we are recommending that the Board of Education authorize Amy Husel, who is the administrative assistant for finance, to serve as the designee as the board secretary, to receive the nominating petitions on behalf of the Board of Education. And with this resolution, she will be enabled to do that.
Mrs. Ebner.
I recommend that the Board of Education authorize Amy Husel, administrative assistant for finance, to serve as the designee of the board secretary, to receive nomination petitions on behalf of the Board of Education, and the Board adopt the resolution entitled, "Resolution Naming Board Secretary Designee to Accept Nominating Papers, Nomination Papers for School Board Elections, Including Legal Notice for Filing Nomination Papers."
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ebner, seconded by Mrs. Derone. Mrs. Walsh.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnny?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion passes. The third thing on the agenda, Mr. Purnell.
This one is for the Board of Education to consider the approval of finding of achievement of the superintendent's goals and authorizations to prefer consideration of a new performance-based contract.
Mrs. Hirsch.
I move that the Board of Education find that Mr. Purnell has met all of the goals in his 2011-2014 performance-based superintendent's contract, and an additional goal establishing key academic and operational performance indicators, which serve as the basis for driving overall district improvement focus and goal-setting. That the Board further find that it is in the best interest of the school district to extend the term of Mr. Purnell's employment as superintendent, and that the Board President and Vice President be authorized to prepare for consideration by the Board and Mr. Purnell a new performance-based contract with an ending date of June 30, 2015, and new short-term and long-term goals.
Second.
I think, actually, I think Mrs. Ebner beat you to it on a photo finish.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
That's, she's very quiet. So moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Ebner. If I can just throw a quick comment here. We, the Board has reviewed the performance of Mr. Purnell, and we're very pleased with the performance of our superintendent over the past year. And what we're authorizing the President and Vice President of the Board to do is enter into negotiations with the superintendent for a new three-year contract. So essentially, just extending his time here by a year as a sign to the community that we're very happy with Mr. Purnell's performance and the performance of his administration. So with that, is there any other discussion? Mr. McDonough.
Just a point of information, that contract will be brought back to the Board for approval.
Yes, it will, yes.
Okay. It does say, "Prepare for consideration." It's for consideration and approval. I don't know if I need to make a motion to amend, but I think we'll just take the interpretation.
That would be fine, and far simpler. And, anything else? So, we'll, so, air it. We'll be bringing a contract back to a future board meeting. So, Mrs. Walsh.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnny?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes.
Just one comment. I appreciate the support of the Board and your confidence in, you know, considering an extension of the contract. I do want to say, though, that my success is largely a responsibility of my administrative team and my members. They work very hard and make me look very good. So I want to thank each and every one of them, because it's a dedicated team that works very hard for this district. And this is not as much me as it is about them. So, thanks.
With that, upcoming meetings, and we have plenty of them, again. Thursday, September 27th, the Board Improvement and Policy Committee meets 7:30 p.m. in room 217, which is part of the big room we're in now. Wednesday, October 3rd, the curriculum, oh, did we cancel? We moved, actually, yeah. Let me give you the correct date. Wednesday, October 10th, the Curriculum and Instruction Meeting will meet at 7:00 p.m. in the District 205 Center, room 17. Tuesday, October 9th, our regular Board of Education meeting at 7:30 p.m. in this very location. Tuesday, October 16th, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 p.m. in this room. And finally, Tuesday, October 23rd, a regular Board of Education meeting at 7:30 p.m. in this same location. So next on the agenda is Board Communications, if there are any, Mrs. Stufen.
Can I make one point of clarification? For Thursday evening, September 27th, the Board Improvement Policy Committee meeting should say 7:00 p.m.
Oh, we had you start in a half an hour later. We were giving you some time off there. So thank you for that correction. Mr. McDonough.
I'm sorry, I was carrying conversation on. Is there a committee of the whole meeting?
Thank you for that as well. On Wednesday, October 10th, the beginning of the Curriculum and Instruction Meeting will be posted and held as a meeting, as a committee meeting of the whole, of the whole Board. What's going to occur at that time is we're going to get a demonstration. So we fully understand how we're going to get a demonstration of these NOVA devices that are being introduced into our middle school science curriculum, so that the Board is able to get a, you know, they say, you know, a picture's worth 1,000 words, and a demo is worth 1,000 pictures. So that we understand how these devices that we're going to be spending money on, and frankly, that the foundation, the District 205 Foundation, is going to be raising money, private money, to provide these to our middle schools for an enhanced children's experience in science, math, engineering, and technology. And really, is our, the district's first foray into what will become a developed STEM program within the district. So we just thought it was valuable for the, for the Board to see these hands-on demonstration of exactly what they do and how they fit in the curriculum. So thank you for that point of clarification as well. Mrs. Ebner.
I wanted to add, it'll be the first 30 minutes. That's it.
Yeah, there may be, there may be cookies. It's, it's the Finance Committee's incentive to end on time. Mr. Welton brings cookies, which frankly, I hope will be a policy he continues. Mrs. Hirsch.
I just want to announce, there are several opportunities, given the general election that's coming up in November, that our students are going to be engaged in a civics project. At the middle school, the middle school staff is working to facilitate a debate-watching event at Sandberg Middle, it'll be hosted at Sandberg Middle School. All of middle school students are invited to participate. I think there's a lot of focus on engaging our students. There'll be interactive devices. I think it'll be a great evening for our middle school students. Also, on the same day, Wednesday, October 3rd, with another hat that I wear with the League of Women Voters, the League of Women Voters, in conjunction with the DuPage Election Commission, will be conducting mock elections at York High School, where every student at York who is enrolled in a social studies class will have an opportunity to come to a polling place and use a real ballot, the special ballot that's printed up with York High School, and cast their ballot for president, the congressional race, as well as a DuPage County-wide referendum question. So all of the social studies teachers at York have really stepped up. They're introducing and talking about real engagement with their students, and this is a great opportunity for our students to learn to become active voters in the process. So I think these are great hands-on experiences for all of our students, and it'll be a great night.
Mrs. Derone.
Is the league registering students at York again?
We register student seniors that day as well. We did it on senior checkout last May, and we did it before the primaries. So we registered 260 York seniors last year, and we're looking to see if we can get a similar number or improve it this year.
Anything else? Hearing nothing, I will entertain the final motion of the evening. Is that from Mrs. Hirsch? I hear a second.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Stufen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.